Um, we started off with the haunted hayride at Rieta hosted by the Lions. Um, if you all missed it, it was a lot of fun and you should've went. Um, there was lots of skits and people walking around in costume and everyone that was there seemed to have a grand time. The place was packed. There was a ridiculous amount of people both nights. Um, but I'm sure the Lions that was there, a very good fundraiser for them. I will bet money on it. And um, but yeah, everyone had a grand time that at least I saw. We were running around as Bigfoot and the kids were running around dressed up as clowns and all kinds of crazy stuff, but everyone had fun. So next year, if you missed it, make sure you get to that. Uh, we also had the Hubbardston Scholarship Committee had their harvest breakfast on Sunday. Um, oh, we did have a good amount of people, um, thankfully for all the baseball. I just wanna throw it out there too. I think it was uh Narragansett uh baseball. And the Hubbardston baseball, they they brought in a lot of kids and came and they ate a lot of breakfast, but um, we did have a good amount. They, the Hubbardston Scholarship Committee did make money off that. And if you don't know, that's an annual fundraiser. You all should go to that too. It's a very good breakfast. There's lots of bacon and sausage and all kinds of good food. It's at the Rodding Gun and um, the Hubbardston Scholarship Committee does a couple fundraisers every year to help raise funds. They give usually give around three thousand dollars away in scholarship money every year, so. It's definitely a worthwhile fundraiser to attend. Um, then there was also the children's Halloween parade, which was super cute. There was a lot of cute little kids dressed up. Uh, my poor son was carrying the American flag and for some reason he kept up with the ambulance. Which was going not walking pace, so if you see any of the videos and you see my-
He did not break a smile. He did not. He was stoic and dedicated.
He was, he was sweating and when he got done, he was like, Mom, my calves are on fire. I'm like, I'm sure they were. You were hauling that whole way. Uh, and I explained to him, I said, for future, when you walk in a parade, the vehicles will stay paced with you. Don't stay paced with the vehicles, cause you're gonna burn yourself out. Uh, so anyway, but yeah, all the kids had fun. They went into the school and they watched the magician, um, Eddie Raymond and they had a grand time. It was, it was a good day, nice community building, um, thing all around. Um, we had last night, the haunted Halloween hoedown, excuse me, Hubbardston Halloween hoedown from four to eight and trick or treating was from five to seven. Um, as soon as seven o'clock hit, it like, everybody was gone. It was amazing. It was like the streets were cleared. Uh, my kids were giving out candy at the, the library and me and my husband were running around as Bigfoot again, cause why not? Um, we tried to get Chiefy to dance if anyone saw that and it did not work. Um, but yeah, it was, everyone had fun. Um, Bill Shea was out with uh Sue and the T-Rex, all that stuff, uh, and his, his vehicles and whatnot. And there was a nice DJ there and uh, the Lions were there with their trailer and everything else, but it was a fun time, very good community event. We walked up and down the street. There was people all up and down Main and uh High Street and like the little side streets there and they were all giving out candy and there was so many kids and they were just having a grand time, so. It was definitely a fun thing to, to go to if, even if you don't have children, just to see the community spirit. Um, coming up next, I'm already on the works of the Hubbardston light fight. So if you decorate your house, definitely feel free to enter. It's twenty dollars for the entry. Um, entries are collected through November. And the first weekend it kicks off is uh, the first weekend of December, the third, fourth and fifth, and we go three weekends. Uh, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, the first three weekends of December from five to nine. We have three categories to choose from. We have uh, the classic contemporary, we have the go big or stay home category, and then we have the, the business category, so whatever you happen to fall in. Um, last year we made the Boston Globe on that one, so it's definitely catching momentum and it's definitely a good uh, community event that helps bring people into our town. Cause there was people coming from all over the place. And when they come in to town, they buy gas, they buy things, they stop and get pizza. So it is a good event for our businesses in town to draw people in. So I would definitely recommend if you decorate your house to please enter and join the fun. It is a fun time. And if you don't decorate, drive around and check out the houses, cause most, there's a lot of them that are definitely worthwhile to check me out.
So how do you enter?
Uh, we have forms right online. You can go to special events on the town website and there's a form with the official rules on there. You can print it out and send it in. Either you can stop in here, they'll print it out for you. You can email me or text me or message me on anything and I will get you the form if you cannot find it. I will gladly get you the form if you can't find it. So yeah, so that's what we got coming up right now. There'll be more stuff coming up in December, but for right now, that's what we got going on.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, okay, moving on to Roman number four, minutes and consent agenda. Um, so minutes, we are pending review on those, we're gonna pass those over.
We're gonna pass those over.
We're gonna pass them over, but uh, o- other items on the consent agenda are permits, uh, approval of liquor licensing for Hubbardston ones, one stop and up market. Appointment, uh, appointment of Bill Shea, Bill Shea to the Memorial Day Committee and appointment of uh Susan Breggie to the Memorial Day Committee. Um, so that's the consent agenda.
Dan, can I put a hold on permits?
Yeah, why don't you do that when we get to discussion?
Oh, okay, sorry.
No problem.
Say what the motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, um, to accept the uh, agenda as presented uh, by, for unanimous consent?
Passing over the minutes.
Passing over the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, can we put a hold on permits?
Yes, we can. Any further discussion?
Is there a reason? Just out of curiosity?
Oh yeah, I have questions.
You have questions, okay.
Yeah. We'll get to the questions after we vote on.
Apparently.
Um, okay, any further discussion? Okay, uh, remaining items, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, it's unanimous? Uh, okay, so what do you got?
Um, just a couple of quick questions, mostly because it's my first time doing uh liquor renewals for Hubbardston. David, how many licenses do we have in town? We just have two?
Two, two all.
Two alcohol?
Two all alcohol uh package stores.
Okay. And on, my other question on the licenses, so I don't know if A-B-C-C has changed their regs. But usually what they've always wanted in the past was a description of the premises, the hours of operation and the manager. And I noticed the licenses that we have don't have those.
Uh, those are already on file when they uh, granted the license in the first place.
Okay.
So that information they have.
Is there any way we can check with A-B-C-C though? Only, I only say this, I, I used to do um, the liquor licensing processing. And it was always one thing that they had stated, especially in the bigger cities, is a recommendation and a requirement. And it's very helpful, I think, for um, police chief or a police member or anyone who's going in, cause they get a call for something, that they can verify the information. That's posted on the wall as opposed to having to go pull an application or look something up that they don't have access to. Um, for the board, they don't know what I mean on that. The, the licensed premises is a very specific description of where one can have the alcohol. Which includes, you know, if there's any elevators or side rooms or anything else. And that way they know if there's a violation, if there's alcohol held somewhere else. I realize we only have two licenses, so very possibly the police department have memorized these over the years, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is never gonna happen, you know.
As, as a matter, as a matter of course, when we could renew the liquor licenses, we always check in with the chief of police to make sure that things are operating smoothly. That there hasn't have been a trouble with uh underage uh service or anything like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Both establishments came back very clean.
So what, are you looking for it on the license?
So usually on the license that David had given us copies of, the ones that actually say, you know, license number, blah, blah, blah. Usually what it includes on is a, a description of the premises, hours of operation. So that if someone goes to enforce something, whether it's a member from A-B-C-C or whether it's a police officer. They can see what the actual hours are on the license and who the manager of record is.
Cause I don't, uh, you know, I'm just looking at the package, that's part of our, our.
Yeah, the renewals, the Form forty threes and stuff, they don't have those.
Yeah, they doesn't have any of that stuff.
Anymore. They used to, they tried to get into shorthand a couple of years back.
Whatever. I mean, if it were, I think we'd probably have to have a little bit further discussion if it were December thirtieth right now, right? So they can continue, but we've got a little time, so.
Got a little bit of time, we can put it on for the fifteenth.
Yeah. Sounds good, yeah. Okay, alright.
Okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, so I, was that?
That was all.
That was it?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else further for, for that uh, consent agenda? Okay, move on to new business. Um, so Sandy, um, you've gotta talk to us about some short-term borrowing.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so I have, um, I need five, five places, all five signatures. Um, this is to renew, uh, the, it's a combination fire truck, DPW truck, BM that we've been doing. Um, the original amount that we financed for the two was six hundred thousand. This is, um, we're paying down fifty thousand a year, so this note is for four hundred thousand. We've paid off two hundred thousand. Uh, the rate is point four six percent.
Too high.
And it's a one-year, um, plan, so it'll come due next November and our plan is to uh, tie this in with the school roof loan eventually. And we'll make a multipurpose municipal loan out of it. Um, but, so I need all your signatures in five places.
I have our signatures. Five places, alright, I'm gonna take the bottom, cause mine's horrible.
Is there an extra pen out there? David, you got an extra pen? Are you sure?
There's one.
Is there a motion?
Shortly. Jeff, you wanna make that motion?
Uh, um, one of my.
How do you want that to sound? To approve the short-term borrowing?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we uh.
As presented by Sandy.
As presented, okay. I make a motion to accept the short-term borrowing as presented by Sandy Neeson.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Well, my signature, look at it. It doesn't take long to sign that. It's only five signatures.
Well, we know the way to sign it.
Yeah, I know, it's aggressive, so. It's just dumb.
Not being a doctor, I write my name.
Well, I'm not a doctor either and I don't write my name, but I'm just like. They're just filling out forms for the school today for the kids and it's like the same form four times over. If I have a fourth form, forget it, can't read it. I'm like, sorry. Reference the other three.
It's, it's a big, they have different, different copy. In your bag, you got this one, Hubbardston copy.
Yeah, it's the same form, they go to three different places. That's why one's for the bank, one's for us, one's for the state.
Come on, we're gonna, we're gonna wait one more minute, because we're, we're one minute away from the six forty-five uh, tax classification here, just to stay on agenda, so might as well just wait that minute instead of bouncing around a little bit.
Have pity on whoever watches this video later.
Signing.
It's like, well, this is boring.
So nasty, darn it.
Not already. You know, it has to be done. We're gonna all sit in silence for a minute. I have a hard time sitting in silence.
You could've brought your Bigfoot costume and entertained.
Oh yeah, that would go well, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Alright, so um, new business, uh, room number roll five B, the six forty-five tax classification hearing. Le- legal notice fiscal year two thousand twenty-two tax classification public hearing, November first, two thousand twenty-one at six forty-five P M. The Hubbardston Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, town offices, seven Main Street, unit number three, Hubbardston, Mass. As required by MGL chapter forty, section fifty-six, to determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property as defined by MGL chapter fifty-nine, section two A, and personal property for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. The board will also decide on the granting of a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption and open space discount. Interested taxpayers may present written or oral information on their views at the public hearing and may submit written information to the select board, seven Main Street, unit number three, Hubbardston, Mass. Zero one four five two. Um, so this was published in, in the uh, Worcester Town Magazine Gazette, uh, Saturday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. David, is there anything else I have to read for this?
Nope, I think you're ready to go.
Okay, so we're opened up. Who do we have for it?
Alright. Good evening.
Hello.
Um, as we do every year, uh, my name is George Berdo. I'm with Regional Resource Group and as you know, we cover the assessing functions of the town. Uh, John Prentis, he's the chairman of the Board of Assessors and um, with that, um, does everybody have, okay. Um, as I've said in past years, the, this is a fairly simple uh, recommendation, uh, ba- based on the fact that the um, this classification hearing purpose is only for the, only for the purpose of, of establishing a single rate or a dual rate if it was necessary. Um, historically, every year, uh, we've gone and we've recommended the single tax rate, which simply means that the residential, commercial, industrial, all pay the same tax rate in town. Um, like a lot of other small towns, there is very little commercial, industrial, um, property. Um, in many communities, the, the shift has been to get away from the dual tax rate and go to the single tax rate to incentivize businesses to stay or to come into a town. Hubbardston situation is such that you simply just don't have any commercial, industrial, that would ever make any difference with this. So with that being said, um, on behalf of the Board of Assessors, we recommend to the select board, uh, the single tax rate and that's, that's it.
And what's the good news, rate versus last year?
The good news is, um, well, the first bad news is that the values have gone up probably around ten percent based on sales. But the good news is that the offset of that is that the tax rate projected, it's gotta be still approved by the Department of Revenue. But uh, we're looking at a, a rate of fourteen dollars even. Um, last year it was, it was fourteen eighty-one. So there is a significant drop in the, in the rate this year. Uh, it's a byproduct of the fact that the values have gone up to follow along with, with, with the influence that the sales of, the, the market has been causing. Uh, nothing different than any other town that we've seen, and I see about thirty towns, um, we've seen ten, even fifteen percent increase in some communities. So, um, it's, it shows a strong real estate market. People are coming in, they're overbidding. They're, they're paying whatever is being asked and then some. And that's what brings us to the, to the increase that we're finding, so. In order to keep uh, compliant with the Massachusetts regulations, we have to bring properties up approximately ten percent across the board to comply with that. But the offset again is the lowering of the tax rate, so, you know, keep in mind, you can only, you, you can only go two and a half percent above the previous year's levy in terms of what the revenue was that you could raise.
Yep.
So in the end, um, the average tax bill for, for a single family house increase is only, it looks in, looking like about a hundred sixty-nine dollars, give or take this year. For the entire year. A lesser val- and that, and that's on an average price of a home that's around three hundred and, I think it's, it's all in here, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, something like that. Um, if you have a much lesser valued home, you're not gonna see as, you might see a hundred thirty dollars increase a year. Um, conversely, that would be that if you saw a seven hundred thousand dollar home, uh, you might be looking at something even higher, but on an average, about a hundred sixty-nine increase.
And our, um, commercial versus residential i- is?
About the same.
No, 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 sorry, the percentage of, is it three percent?
Oh, it's, uh, yeah, less than that. In fact, I think I've got that in here. Uh, you can see the exact figure. Um. If you look at page four. Including, including personal property, it's, there's about six percent of the value is tied up into the commercial, industrial and personal property. Three percent of that roughly is uh, is personal property, so it's only about three percent, like you said, that's commercial, industrial.
Right, which, which is, the last thing we wanna do is jack up, one, uh, well, don't speak for everybody, but it feels like the last thing we wanna do is jack up the rate.
Right.
For such a small percentage and then further dissuade those businesses from wanting to come to our town, because there's a high rate.
Right.
And we don't make anything for it.
There, there's not enough here to, to get anything out of it anyway, so.
Right.
So you're absolutely correct on that.
Cause we've been carrying a single tax rate for the forty-plus years I've been on the board, so.
Okay, anyone have any further questions? Okay, so um.
So what I would recommend is, um, for somebody on the board, um, to go to the last page and if you look at this, there's the recommendation, the reading, uh, for the vote. And then with the vote, we'll have what we need to present this to the Department of Revenue. So the proposed motion is right on the last page.
Yep. So you just want that read in?
Read, read and voted on.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the uh, Hubbardston Board of Select, the Select Board of Hubbardston votes in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty, section fifty-six. As amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two tax rates and set the residential factor at one point zero, with a corresponding CIT shift of one point zero pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Mass Department of Revenue.
I'll second that.
Uh, discussion? Just to know, we are the select board now, so you're, whatever you're gonna submit, our final motion will, will say select board instead of Hubbardston Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion, questions? Well, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, once again.
Well, can you trip, have fun.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, John, thanks Al. Okay, Roman number five C, we have a joint meeting with the Hubbardston School Committee.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, joint meeting with Hubbardston School Committee Representatives to fill a vacancy according to section three E until next annual town election and section three E subsection E vacancies. If a vacancy on the committee occurs for any reason, the selectmen and the remaining committee members or members from the town involved acting jointly shall appoint a member to serve until the next annual town election. At which election, a successor shall be elected to serve the balance of the u- unexpired term, if any. Everyone understand that? And who do we have here from the school committee?
Yeah.
Mark Wiegler.
Debbie Chamberlain.
Okay, and you guys are the remaining members?
We're, there, there, there's one other member who wasn't able to come tonight to ring for me.
Yep. Okay. Yes, please.
Hopefully you all have in your, uh, in your packets, the uh, request for appointments with John Boyd Committee from uh, Mr. Robert Bergeron, who's to my left. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
Now, uh, we're recommending, uh, Mr. Bergeron for the duration of the appointment. As, as you can obviously see, um, roughly has twenty years as a special education teacher. He's currently administr- administrator in the Dudley Charlton Regional School District.
My dad was a special, uh, did you know that? I don't know, you probably have no idea. But my dad at Shepherd Hill was the, for twenty years, the special ed administrator.
At Shepherd Hill?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Small world.
It is.
And uh, so, so right now he's serving as the uh, director of uh, pupil personnel services. So i- in our mind, it's really a, a positive move to have somebody who really understands the school system. I mean, it, it's really critical, especially in this uh, day and age and COVID nineteen and the modifications and uh, a, a lot of uh, you know, concerns around, you know, special ed. Bottom line is, uh, Mr. Bergeron can, can give us a little more if you so desire.
I, I just, I was looking for the next school committee meeting. I wanted to, uh, begin to participate as a parent. My son just started kindergarten this year in Hubbardston Center School. Um, I noticed there was a vacancy. I know how important it is for a regional school district to have the proper number of representatives from each town. Um, so I, I thought I would see if I could help out. I don't know the story, I don't know when the town election is, so this kinda just came together. Um, but I'm hoping I could help the board out in the time being and we'll figure it out as we go.
Yeah, that's a huge help. I mean, it's so, I think June seventh is town meeting? David, is that right?
Town, town meeting, it would be the Tuesday after that.
So it's, the Tuesday after that, sort of fourteen, something like that, but um, you know, we, we were wondering, um, if there was gonna be anyone who stepped up, so, you know, we've, and, and to have this resume, um, we're lucky, um, that you did, so, you know, thank you for, for stepping up here. Hopefully, um, you know, your experience goes, goes, I don't know what word. Um, well enough for you to, to wanna continue to, but we will get there at some point, so.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone have any questions for, uh, is, is it Bob or Rob? Bob, anyone have a question for Bob or? No? Okay, so we're a joint committee right now, s- all seven of us, right? So if someone make a motion in a second, then all seven of us, we'll probably go roll call?
Mm-hmm.
You think?
I don't know everybody in the room, but.
No, I'll do, I'll do a roll call.
Okay, but why don't we do the roll call?
We've, I think we should do that, okay, so if there's a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, accept the appointment of Mr. Robert Bergeron to fill the position in the, uh, Regional School Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, can I just recommend the next, the annual town election?
Until what? Until the annual town election.
I'll still second.
Okay, unanimous, okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, we're gonna go roll call. Uh, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dan? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Um, Heather?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Okay, did everybody?
We thank you very much.
Alright, unanimous, thanks a lot.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you very much.
Alright, have a good night, guys. When's the next meeting?
When's the next meeting? Uh, it'd be on the eleventh, but it's a holidays. Actually, we're missing a meeting right now.
Oh.
Holidays, but, um, we're scheduled for the eleventh, but it's probably gonna be the eighteenth, I would think, without the holidays.
It's Thursday, the eleventh, not Thursday.
Yeah, it's a holiday, that's, that's.
Okay, good night, guys.
I know what it is, I'm just saying usually you, you get the w-.
I'm just saying it's over the weekend, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, they always do Thursday, they have their incident. Oh, no, wait, no, it's the eleventh, they, they move. Yeah, it's always the eleventh. And that one, that one moves, yeah.
Okay, uh, next item we have is, is uh, new business, uh, Roman number five D, which is goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, I'd actually like to, I, you know, I obviously left it on the agenda here for discussion, but what I, what I think we should do is, um, push it off, uh, until we have a chance for our next meeting to come up with the goals that, um, we all have. Um, and then sort of discuss them. We, we, we didn't, didn't do enough review of our, our goals from last year, without a doubt. Um, I think Chris sort of knew that was gonna happen, uh, I'm not speaking for him here, but just based on our, our early discussions on, on what you do when you have goals and actually following through on them. So I think instead of, um, you know, sort of trying to figure them out tonight, I think individually, we can, we can sort of come up with our own and then come to our next meeting and, and put another agenda item on there to discuss, so, um, that's what we're gonna do, okay?
Yep.
Um, next item, Roman number five E, which is the lot fifty-seven pitch of road, release of substance form for DEP. Um, you know, I, I know a bunch about this too, David, but can you give us a little, um, summary to save my voice a little bit?
Sure, we, uh, received from the, uh, from our engineers, a, uh, report on August fifth uh, that the soil that had, at lot fifty-seven, um, had been tested and it showed, uh, contamination with, uh, lead. Uh, and it showed some other contamination with, uh, road sweepings. Uh, the lead part, contamination has to be remediated most likely. Uh, our engineers, VHB, um, are recommending a, uh, scope of work which costs about thirty-one thousand dollars. We don't have that. We're not in a position to take advantage of that, but there are some reporting that, reports that we have to give to DEP. We have to do that within a one, a hundred and twenty day period, so.
All of the, um, so what might be contaminants, which are heavy metals, lead, arsenic, mercury, all those sorts of things, plus any petroleum items or o- other PCBs, you guys might have heard that. There are certain thresholds that, that Massachusetts DEP has for RCS, is what they call reportable concentrations. If you're above that, you have to report that concentration. You've got, so you have a hundred and twenty days to do it. That's what we're discussing here, so there's a certain cost for filing.
Right, so, uh, VHB has proposed. Right, so the VHB has proposed the cost of fifteen hundred dollars to make that uh report happen and comply with the regulations. So I think that's the a- the action item tonight.
I I do too. I mean, we're gonna have to deal with it eventually um for a couple reasons. One is you have to, you know.
I was just gonna say, what's our what's our options? What are what are our choices?
Once the I think the argument's been opened up, you can't close it, right?
Yeah.
Well, we we don't, we didn't we didn't allocate the money yet, so next time we'll have to allocate the money for that.
It's they've.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Right, so we just don't have the money yet, but next time, you know, that we come to town meeting or whatever, we're gonna have to have an article on there to to deal with it uh appropriately. Um you know, per theirs or some other proposal to um do the additional sampling necessary and then the ultimately what the remediation's gonna have to be. So um you know, this is sort of one of those be careful what you
Mm-hmm.
you wish for situations when you you know, we've got some affordable housing that we're looking to do, but we've got a situation now to deal with and um the the site's on hold as a firing range and um I think we're just punting right now, cause we just don't have the money to to actually do that, an adi- additional assessment quite yet.
Just one question, the fifteen hundred, are we taking, I know when Alice was here last, she was talking about the money we already pulled some of that study from. Well, are we gonna pull the fifteen hundred from that as well or pull it from the reserve fund? What was the plan, David?
Uh I would um I would pull it from the reserve fund.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so the the motion would be to um pull fifteen hundred dollars from the re- reserve fund for the um the notification? Is that what you'd like us to say, something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion. Help me if on on notification or whatever, how you want that worded, but I make a motion after we uh take fifteen hundred dollars from the reserve fund. So that.
For 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 this right here, call this yet for the.
Task ten oh.
No, no.
Preparation of release notification form.
That's it.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Uh is there any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, okay, unanimous. Next item is the uh Roman number five F, which is the encroachment license agreement, signatures needed.
Yeah, so we got a license from one of the abutters on the uh Route sixty eight project and.
I'm going with this right here, cause I see a signature there. I am the back. Maybe?
Yeah, that looks that looks like it's the one.
Can you grab it?
Yes, this one.
This one, okay. All right, and this is for uh GFA, correct?
Yeah.
That's right.
It was that one spot, correct? That's the only blue tab.
That's it.
You must have all your papers signed.
So somebody wanna make a motion to sign the encroachment license agreement?
I'll make a motion to sign the encroachment license for uh GFA.
Second the motion.
Discussion? So David, um just so we're all clear here, this encroachment um license is is for them allowing us to do the work proposed
Mm-hmm.
on for the town center project
Yeah.
for um you know, the information that we provided to them uh as part of a right of way. That's right?
Yes.
Okay, so th- this won't this will be one of many to come, uh but this is one right now. This is a good sign, without a doubt. So anyway, any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a second one. How many are there? Fifty something? And there's we got two.
But we own a bunch. We own we own a bunch.
Huh? Oh, we own a bunch, okay. I'm like, that's number two. Reverse.
Reverse. So next item, uh old business, Roman number six A, Veterans Service Agreement Discussion. Where we at with that, David?
Well, I've I've been playing phone tag with the administrator of uh Templeton. We have not had a chance to talk, but I left enough phone messages to let him know that we're interested in the shared VSO, um Veteran Service Officer. And his response back to me by messages that he's left is that he's open to the idea and he has some questions. So I don't have anything more than that to report right now, but it seems like they are they are at least open to the the idea.
Are uh is that the only option at this point?
We have Gardner.
That's still um an option.
Still an option.
And is there any specific starting period that we need to adhere to for Gardner that that has been part of your discussions?
Yes, so um the sooner the better. Um I've been the the elections in Gardner have taken all the oxygen out of the room for anything right now, so. Uh I've been I've been working with uh trying to get in touch with Templeton. Uh I understand the issues with Gardner, both in terms of costs and as well as performance. Um so I th- I really think that Templeton is a better choice. It'll be cheaper and hopefully better.
Okay. Alright, so hopefully for next meeting, you'll have something to uh report back.
Yeah.
And that would just be Templeton and us, or is is there another community?
That'd be Templeton Templeton and us. We we approached Berry and they they couldn't do it.
Okay, fair.
Okay, any anyone have any more questions? No. Alright, well, next is the um B, which is this cell uh cell tower discussion. So we've we've received some information from you recently on that and about the details on that, and now we've we've got, you know, some sort of an end in sight.
Right. Right, so uh we had a th- uh meeting with uh the town administrator of Rutland, Ron Sanangelo. Uh we had a uh in the room was uh Mi- Michael Moriarty, Director of Communications for Rutland. Uh we had the general contractor in the room, uh and me in the room, and we had a conversation about what this uh project looks like in terms of steps that we need to take, time schedules and so forth. Uh Ryan has said that he's heard this before and I think that um that there is a some reason for hope because we have the town administrator of Rutland wondering why this is on his desk all of a sudden. And the general contractor who's hoping to get uh money out of the deal sooner rather than later. Uh beginning in December, we should start seeing some site work and they'll also get a uh utility easement to to add power to that site. Uh there'll be steel that will be uh coming to town. They were gonna store it on site. I said, is that secured? They said, how about in the DPWs? So I think we're gonna have that uh there. There's the FCC license that needs to be procured, um and that's gonna take two months just there, but there's things that we can be doing in the meantime. In the end, we'll have a a hundred and eighty foot tall tower uh with a utility uh shed, a fence. It should be a turnkey operation uh with uh the dispatcher equipment located at the top and um space for two sets of uh cell phone uh equipment apparatus.
Carriers.
Carriers. Um so the the only question for us is how do we wanna handle um that uh cell phone uh service? Is this something that we should uh let Rutland work on or should we?
God, no, no. Oh.
Right, so it has to go through then for procurement, it sounds like.
Well
No.
it may not, it may not. Communications.
Then let's let's work, we care about it more than they do, so.
Yeah.
I agree with Katie's exasperation.
Yeah.
I I know that Ryan was working on something and that I've got some models from other towns.
Okay.
So we can start working on that. There's no reason for us to wait for the tower to be built. We can start getting that information down to the public.
That's great. Okay.
I have a question, please put it.
Of course.
David, on the um the Elevated Consulting phases of the Rutland project breakdown, that second sheet that itemizes everything, there's an amount at the bottom for tw- or I'm sorry, in the first category, twelve thousand seven fifty four, that's adjacent to the bonds. I assume that's related to the bonds and not related to like permits, plans and designs?
Say that again?
So at the on the sheet, the breakout, right?
Yeah.
The very bottom of the first category of the phase one, it says bonds and then there's an amount that's over to the side for twelve thousand some change. But right above it says permits, plans and designs. I guess my question is, in the past, we've discussed, you know, whether we were gonna waive the permit fee or fee or not. You had looked into it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we had talked about, you know, that even if Gardner were to take a piece of it, a negotiated piece, because that's what the uh contract with them says.
Yeah.
I don't remember actually getting to the point where the board either made a motion to waive or whether there was an answer of whether or not there was enough money in the grant to cover the cost of the permit fee. So I'm just I'm just trying to figure out what this twelve thousand comes from and then go back to the permit fee question.
Well, the bond would be part of the uh the uh um the 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 project that's required by state law for uh a project of that size and it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of the project, so.
Okay. So that mon- the amount, the monetary number is likely linked to the bond line. It's not misprinted in the wrong spot.
Yeah. No.
So then we go back to the permit fee question.
So their contingency is uh sufficient to cover any permits that we may wanna charge for. Um my sense of the board, and again, you haven't taken a vote, that that um the permit fee is appropriate in this this place, in this case. It's about four thousand dollars for the building permit and at least a hundred and fifty dollars for the electrical.
Because m- most importantly, where does the permit fee come from?
It'd be coming from the grant itself.
From the grant, so absolutely.
Okay, so you don't need any action from us on that?
Well, maybe a stand by the board would be helpful. And nor we typically don't charge uh permit fees for municipal construction. This seems to be a special case.
Yeah, I agree. I don't I don't see why we wouldn't do it if it comes from the grant, when I'm taking from Rutland, we're not, you know, I mean, it's part of the um
Mm-hmm.
part of the whole process, so s- seems seems like a good idea to me. So a motion to um to approve the the building permit costs for the project, is it something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Can I talk about it a little more?
Sure.
You said there would be a opportunity for just two cell service providers on the tower?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the maximum or is that what will be available when the tower's up? Can we add to that?
That's that's uh what the tower can support.
Just to.
Just to.
Okay.
So then you're that would go out to like an RFP and bids and all that stuff, you see, okay.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna be upset.
For what? Cause it's not their.
Just finally getting cell service, but they have carrier.
Won't be their carrier, yeah.
What they have, but they have.
Uh they all they all ping off each other. They all ping off each other.
They do. They do, they do, that's true.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so someone someone to make a motion to um to do what I said, which which is relative to uh um you know,
Charge the fees.
charging the building permit fees
Yeah.
for the cell tower.
I'm.
I'd like.
Go ahead, Heather.
You sure? Right. I'd like to make a motion that we charge the building permit fee for the cell tower um project by Elevated Consulting.
Yeah.
I will second that.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. And then we have Route sixty eight project on here. Why do we have Route sixty eight project in here? Was is it just a for a notification for next week's meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So next week, November eighth, um Monday, we have uh TEC coming in, our engineer, and uh we've got a lot of questions about um uh the letters of intent that went out to everybody, um you know, who's gonna be affected by this project. Um and so, you know, a while ago, we had all decided that that we'd have a a meeting, um in- informational meeting, I think is what we're calling it.
Mm-hmm.
Um and uh can everybody can, we're trying to get the word out and David's let everybody know who's contacted him and an email went out today. You know, we're just trying to let everybody know that if if they have any questions, they can come and uh and ask them then. And some of them might be, you know, very technically specific to their property, some might just be, how do I donate or what form do I fill out, that sort of thing? So any questions um welcomed and um you know, any any way we can accelerate the process by providing more information is definitely what we wanna do. So we don't get, you know, held up um in 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 the queue of uh Mass DOT allocating all the monies for the project. So that's the real intent of of getting this done now. If we have to do another one, we'll do another one, but that this is uh hopefully we can bite off a lot of it, like as as Katie was saying, there are a lot of interested parties.
Mm-hmm. And what's the what's the um what's the impact of the personal property holders? How many how many families or properties would be affected?
There are fifty one total, but there's a lot of town of Hubbardston as well, so I'm not exactly sure.
Right.
No more than forty nine though, cause we just signed two.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Fifty one private.
Fifty one private and public. Um okay, any else on sixty eight you wanted to?
Uh it's not posted as a select board meeting, it's uh town c- center committee meeting, so you're welcome to be there, but you're not needed for quorum.
Okay.
More is gonna be.
It's gonna be in the senior center, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so TEC's gonna bring some plans, they're gonna have everything laid out on tables and and uh it's just gonna be a nice open informational meeting with with as as much time as people need.
Any time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Okay, uh te- town administrator report?
Okay, so. On with respect to ARPA, a couple of things. Uh first of all, Senator Gobi has reached out to town of Hubbardston to see if we uh might want to have some an al- an a portion of the state ARPA money for various projects.
Yes.
We said yes.
One dog, yes.
We didn't have a whole lot of guidance and the time was short, so we uh asked for two projects. Um one to connect all five uh municipal buildings with fiber optic
Hmm.
s- for about eighty one eighty two thousand dollars. And the other was to handle roads in town. And we initially asked for a million dollars, uh but then riddled that down to five hundred thousand uh after consulting with Ryan and Travis and Dan. Um this has gotta be done by November seventeenth. Uh the House has already issued their ideas about how to share ARPA money. This is uh money, by the way, above and beyond our cut of uh one point four million dollars, so. Um very happy that uh that we have this opportunity and I hope that uh our request is um funded.
So what's the formal process?
Um I would reach out to Senator Gobi and thank her profusely.
Mm-hmm.
Um and just let her know how much we support uh the request.
Okay, so we don't, wait, there's no specific.
There's no nothing that we do at this point.
So.
Why why didn't we whittle down the amount?
Um the original amount was based upon uh information that we got out of the road capital plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then after discussing it with uh with Travis, who said, no, the number should be six fifty. And talking over it with Ryan, he said that if we can ship in our own money, uh we can k- keep that mo- that cost down to five hundred thousand dollars from the state. Uh and it makes the the request more credible. Uh a million dollars, it sounds like you just pulled the mon- money out of thin air. Um I was just figuring out if thin air, but uh.
Skin in the game piece.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Nice big fat round number.
Why don't we, why don't we, don't we have more than six hundred thousand dollars worth of road work to do?
Yes, we do.
About twenty million.
Yeah.
Hmm, so why don't we say eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we don't like the one million dollar number?
Well, we could.
If it's there for the taking, I think we oughta try to get it.
Well, I think, so I I don't uh I the way it was described is Lombard Road is a piece of this, right?
Yeah, that's that's the one that.
So the million originally, Lombard, which we we've tried in vain to get this strap grant over the last three or four years, we just couldn't do it. And the the strap grant's worth a million dollars, so that's why we were going for Lombard. And so a million was the original request, just to say, hey, let's get that million. And the chap says like, you know, it doesn't actually cost a million for Lombard, so I went to six fifty. And then these guys talked and said, you know what, why don't we do five hundred? We can kick in a little bit, maybe that'll make it more palatable. So that was why, cause it was Lombard centric. I'm not against eighty eighty, I'm just saying that's that's where that.
But we've got a lot more than Lombard to do.
What's the. It's a pleasure of the board.
That's I'm just making a suggestion.
Ten million dollars.
If it's there for the taking and we don't we we think one million is unappetizing because it's just a
Let's just
round number that doesn't appeal to anybody, we can certainly use more money for roads and what's the number, six hundred thousand, six hundred sixty thousand?
Are they breaking it down by town population or anything like that? Or are they just looking at projects that are viable? Or how are they breaking this up across the state?
I don't think I don't think anybody's got a metric like that at this point.
Okay. Nobody has a clue. It's all just uh it's gonna be a free for all.
It was it was it was I was given literally six hours to put this together.
Okay.
What what's the risk of asking of asking for more? 'Cause I I'd rather ask for more and settle down to six fifty. Is there any negotiations after we ask or or what happens if we ask for more?
Uh it would not work that way. That would be it would be a um language that would be submitted to the senate for a senate vote, then a reconciliation between the house and the senate, and then it'd have to go to the governor. Um and we would have no role in in negotiating unless you wanted to talk directly to Senator Goby on this one.
And she's the one that proposes how much?
She's she's the one who's 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 trying to get her her constituents to submit the projects that would fall under the ARPA category.
She's our advocate, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
We made a number. But Ryan recommended the five hundred?
Right, because we have enough free cash that we can make up the difference.
Mm-hmm.
And what's the difference?
Uh five hundred thousand dollars and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash gets you to the six fifty, which is what Travis is talking about for the uh the road.
And that's specifically earmarked for Lombard?
It does it wouldn't be in the in the uh in the final bill that comes out. It would say for the town of Hubbardston's X amount of dollars for roads. You could redeploy that money however you wish.
Yeah, there's no reference.
If we asked if we asked for more, is there the possibility that we wouldn't get anything?
It's possible you won't get anything now. Um
That's okay.
Yeah.
Which is I think is one of Ryan's point of keeping it at around five hundred.
Yeah. Because it was
But he could say two hundred. I mean, we're just making numbers up.
Mm.
Right, exactly. They're just funny numbers, I mean.
Yeah.
This meeting could've started with two million, you know.
And if she's proactively reaching out to us to do something, I think we oughta be a little more aggressive with our request if she she pro- proposed the million dollar number.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Could we get like the top three roads that are on our list of stuff that's just unattainable? You know what I mean? Like to this project, this project and this project and break 'em into three and then hope for three? So that way if she did not, it can get us two.
Definitely.
So no, it doesn't work like that. It's just gonna be a number.
We could get uh Or or zero, like so it's a tricky one.
Mm yeah, I know. Cause if you ask for too little, you could've got more. If you ask for too much, you're gonna get slated.
But we have no idea what too little and too much is. That's what I mean. If this meeting started at two million, we're talking about one four. We're all convinced one four is okay, but we're just we're just
No. Nope.
We might not agree.
Making up numbers. How much is the is the state handing out?
Uh two point seven billion dollars.
Petty change. Ah it's for real.
I think we should be more aggressive.
I'm with Chris. I'm with Chris.
I I think we should be more aggressive too.
We've got plenty of work to do for roads in this town. And if the money's there for the taking
Yeah, go after it.
and she's 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 proactively reaching out to us to apply and she's gonna support us up in town.
Yeah.
I think we oughta go for more.
Yep.
Right.
I think we should too go for a couple couple of the roads that we just can't get our hands around.
In my opinion.
And it's gonna y and we all know the roads. They're just they're not on the list. We're trying to get money. We can't.
But she but she hasn't indicated to you anything about specific numbers?
No. No guidance.
Could you could you approach her with a number and e feel her out and see, you know, what she thinks about that number or if that will fly or if she
Certainly, I can do that.
David, you mentioned earlier that you had about six hours to come up with a number. Did she already close the request window on us and say, David, what's your number? On your mark, it's set, go.
Uh yeah, so the uh end of business uh two Fridays ago was the uh the uh the dropped the deadline.
Oh, so we can't raise it on Okay, so it's it's very likely that we're out of luck at this point.
We're stuck.
No, we've made a request. We can we can bump that request up.
But Okay. Do we happen to know if any of our um our neighboring TAs have made I I guess we get to the same point asking on Senator Goby, but
How much are they asking for?
Sometimes asking behind the scenes and seeing how much money they ask for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we just kinda comment, but on her.
Then we can go par.
Look, we're being fiscally responsible.
And that's again assuming that she's willing to make adjustments and not be like, your request is in. Thank you, David. We've moved on.
I'm assuming this is gonna have to go in front of boards and stuff at the state level to be approved.
Yeah, and
Yeah.
Else in the senate, this is this is this is a mess.
Yeah, this is all just like shh 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 shh. Yeah, and then they're gonna titty it out for what they deem is necessary.
And then the company has to prove it.
Yeah.
Well, we have a meeting next on the fifteenth.
Yep.
And that's two days before the ultimate thing is due?
Uh let me make a bunch of phone calls and come up with with um a path forward if if you wanna be more aggressive with the ask.
Okay.
I think the original due date was two Fridays ago.
Made it to go. Yeah.
But didn't you mention November seventeenth?
November seventeenth is the end of the formal session at the at the st- state house.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
So this uh they've gotta do whatever sausage making that they've gotta do
Before then, right.
before then.
Yeah.
So in other words, realistically, if we're gonna screw around with this, we need to do it like outright.
We we could miss out if we
Yeah.
make too much of a case.
We have an ask in, but
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe we should just not mess with it.
I'd say we poke around and see if we can get a little more.
I think we ask for more.
What's the harm in saying so? What what would be the harm? Uh and if we kind of bumped that up a little bit, would that kind of we 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 came across a couple more things that we really you know what I mean? And just ask her without formally putting it in and see if she would be receptive to that. See if it's a go. She's ch- cause she should she's usually pretty honest, like I'll tell you, like she may not know, but
Or we legally can't or something.
Yeah, or something, yeah. Like no, you're stuck. Yeah, but at least
And then it's fine, right? But if we don't if we don't ask the question
You'll never get an answer.
Right, we're only shooting ourselves in the foot. We gotta ask, we gotta shoot them on, settle for what we've already got if that's the case and
Yeah.
Okay.
go from there.
Alright. The other ARPA the other ARPA thing is is that uh uh Katie, you were right that we didn't take a vote as to who the two members of the select board would be on the ARPA committee.
Again, in my opinion.
Yes. No.
Um we should get that committee up and going. So if you could uh designate who your two members are, that would be very helpful.
Alright, who wants to be on it?
I would happily do it.
Okay.
I would happily do it.
Okay.
Chris, you're gonna hang out with me on ARPA?
Well, you're gonna be gone in sixteen days and not be able to do anything, right?
Oh, that's what you think.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I don't go way that easy. I don't think it's strapping.
Okay.
Alright, moving on. Other parts of my reports.
So do you wanna vote on that?
Oh yeah. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Just keep going.
So I I'll make a motion there.
I'll make a motion that we appoint uh Heather and Chris to the ARPA committee.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All favor? Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
School biz
Thanks, guys.
um roof uh project. The project is substantially complete. Um we have one more meeting coming up on Wednesday, the tenth. Um but uh contractors have cleared out, punch lists are going are being reviewed. The only major open issue is the damage to the gymnasium floor. And the uh
Can I ask about that, please?
the general contractors working with their insurance agency and coming up with the cost during the process of getting quotes. Um that repair still through certainly patch it. Um but the sanding the entire floor down to uh some sort of base and then putting the new c uh coat of uh of material on top of that will require a certain amount of time. That may be deferred. That that repair may be deferred until the summer.
So let me jump in. So they want to patch it, right? So they they
Can I can I just ask what the damage is?
The leak dumpster.
They've they've yeah, the the roof leaked during one of these.
In the gym.
And what's the impact of the floor?
It um fell on the floor and then warped it.
I don't know.
How many square feet?
Where was it?
A bunch.
It's major.
Where was it? I never even saw it.
Overbo- yeah, it's over where the fi finance committee sits. So your tables and stuff were all gone, so you wouldn't have seen it.
In the corner. Yeah.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
So it makes the gymnasium unusable for students?
No, so here's the deal. So they they 'cause I was on the, you know, the the whatever group that the project team. Um they proposed the first proposal uh from the contractor was um we will uh on us, meaning on them, we'll patch this little area. And uh they proposed that or they said, or the town, because we're going in there, um we'll do this area and then you can s the town can s pay for twenty seven thousand dollars or thirty thousand to sand the whole floor to make it all look the same. And so um yeah, I met down there with Kevin from the the Quavon district. We looked at it and looked at the heat. He spent a lot of time on it. We and they spent a lot of time dehumidifying and trying to get to a position, but it's just it was just kind of a mess. So um my recommendation was screw that. You guys did this. You gotta fix the whole thing because it's gonna look different color, it's gonna have a different finish, it's gonna have a different everything. So I sent an email to project team and said that and then that was given at the project the next project meeting. And um at that point, the contractor said, okay, we will patch it for now to make it safe. And we're gonna go to our insurance company to pay for the rest of it um to do the floor right. So
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
we will have a patch for a while and then when they figure all the insurance stuff out between their insurance company, then they'll fix the floor complete. Is that right?
That's that's what they call this.
And what does complete mean? They're gonna undo their patch?
They're gonna
Gonna sand it all and polyurethane and stain and all that, so it's
Yeah, they'll
That's
All the floor, gun the whole floor.
Yeah. They'll have the sand the whole time.
So the patch the patch is the patch is going to remain there as part of the complete floor?
Correct. It's gonna be a patch in kind with the rest of the floor. It's just gonna look different because it's
Right.
different.
It's not the same wood that was
The same wear. No, it's the same wood. It'll be the same, it'll just be a different wear. I mean
Yeah.
Right.
But oh Yeah, when you stain something that's new, it's yeah, it's not kinda you'll you'll be able to pick it out, but it won't be bad. You know what I mean?
Okay, a hundred percent. Right, it's just Right. Yep.
So
Anyway.
Yeah.
So the patch will be for how long until the complete floor gets re
No, if they can do the complete floor in uh January, then uh uh they they probably wouldn't even need the patch. So um it but given the amount of time that the material needs to cure, um they'll probably defer that whole project to the
Summer.
summer except for the patch, which they would do in January.
Right. Right. So the kids will still have access to the gymnasium for the remainder of the school year?
Yeah. Yeah.
How long will it take them to do the patch, do we know?
I don't know. Uh the curing time would be the uh maybe seven days for curing.
And they don't have to shut down the school or anything because of materials they're using, right?
But they would do they would do
Classroom classroom activities can continue throughout the
they would do they would do it during the January break.
Oh, okay.
Good idea.
Hmm. Okay, good. Alright, yeah, I'm on board with that. That makes sense.
And otherwise the project was was a really successful project.
Yes.
I wouldn't say otherwise. I mean, that stuff happens, you know, but uh overall the product was great and, you know, they dealt with some delays and all that, but costs were all in line. Um and they they were a very responsive contractor.
Yeah, they didn't play the change order game. Uh they were they were there when they said that they'd be there. Uh they did have uh extremes of weather, heat and rain.
Right.
Um they were able to work with the the uh students and make sure that everything happened in the way it was supposed to. Uh they're very responsive to our requests, so um yeah, it was a very good project.
I would just like to say one more thing. I was gonna bring this up after, might as well now. It makes perfect sense. So I was amazed by how much um the superintendent, uh Sheila Muir and Cheryl Dubal took ownership of that project. They went to like twenty five project meetings and asked every question and made sure that finances were all, I mean, they were really engaged in it. I don't know if they do that for every project in the district. It's amazing to me, but they did it and they took care of us. Cause, you know, a lot of the town's money was in that. So I wouldn't mind sending them a a thank you from the select board in in the way that they, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah.
Um this select, just the way that they
Absolutely.
basically took care of us and handled handled the project specifically. I I there's a I I was shocked. I figured the first meeting or two that we went to, you know, that was just they were showing up. They showed up. I I couldn't get there for a bunch of them because of work and they were there every single week. And and working with the contractor, working with the town staff, I mean, there was like eight people there every meeting. It was just really well coordinated.
Is there a um is there a venue for us to express what Dan just said about this contractor? And you know, how well they worked with us and the quality of work they'd done and how responsive they were? Is there feedback that the town gives on project like these specifically about the the company or the contractor doing the work?
Yes, uh so the D CAM, the 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 Department of the of uh Capital Assets and Management uh sends out an evaluation form for the contractor and subcontractors. And you rate them in terms of the various things that they look at, you know.
Oh, great.
Were they on time? Were they within budget? Were they responsive to your requests? And that score goes back to um D CAM and the share with the contractor.
And not just that. The contractor's prequalification to be able to bid other projects hinges on having minimum scores and minimum average scores over the projects that they do. So um it's really, really important.
Yeah. Yeah.
So let's make sure we get our floor situation resolved before we send them a glowing, you know, recommendation.
Nice.
You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
But if they did the work and they they they, you know,
Yep.
admitted their mistake and take care of the problem, then there's no reason why we should do say anything negative about it. It just added into the added into the, you know, added into the uh
Yeah.
the review and saying they made a mistake, they owned up to it and they fixed it properly and all was great.
Yep. Okay. Agreed.
Good.
The master plan. Okay, so there is an opportunity for us to finish the work on the master plan. Uh the only sections that need to be completed are the recreation part and implementation chapters. Uh if this is completed in time, the master plan may go to the annual town meeting for a vote. So all we do is stay on the annual town meeting warrant. Church exterior, they are um working with the Mass Historical Commission. They've uh developing a uh project notification um uh form so that they can get this project in on the radar of that historic commission so that they know that the historic preservation restriction is coming. Um the structural engineer is working and we'll get the report at some point. Our revenues and expenses for the first three quarter for the first three months of the uh fiscal year are right in line. Uh we should be about twenty five percent of both expenditure and revenue and that's pre pretty much where we are. On pages six, seven and eight, there's information about your tax rates and history. Uh and uh comparisons with other towns for single family tax bill. Uh Hubbardston is in very good shape. Uh they're in the lowest twenty five percentile of the Commonwealth in terms of single family tax bill. Um that is it.
Question, David?
Yeah?
Um I don't remember how many meetings ago, but we had the couple here that was talking about the adjacent property to them, the trust with the kennel issue and so forth.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Were we able to schedule a meeting with them or make any progress on that?
So I talked to Mallory this afternoon on that very same subject. Um and um and uh yeah, so the the building inspector was supposed to go over there. He's been on vacation. I'm gonna track him down tomorrow and find out where we are on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Miss David, um next item on number eight, policies review. We don't have any of those uh matters uh not reasonably as big by chair. I don't have any. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss?
So David sent out a letter to us for the proposed zoning amendment for annual town meeting to go to Alice of the planning board um to increase the uh zoning violation from fifty do fifty dollars per occurrence to actually migrate up to the maximum of three hundred. The only question I have, David, is over the past year and a half since we've contracted with Gardner, how many times The only question I have David is over the past year and a half since we've contracted with Gardner how many times have do you know have we issued a violation enforcement action with a fine attached to it?
So far as I can tell we haven't issued any um
Okay.
uh the zoning enforcement is obviously a big problem um and this is one step in the long journey of getting uh zoning enforcement of going here to town a public thing
Okay.
um fifty dollar fine is nothing these days
Well
if it's if it's an escalated fine that that has a lot more oomph to it.
My only reservation moving forward to something like this is just you know unless information and situations change I don't think I could support it at the next annual town meeting because of we have no one that's enforcing it we can't ask the public to increase the amount that we're gonna not find.
But in the same sense if the amount is now so low that they it's easily ignored because they're real realizing we're not enforcing that continues.
If we're not enforcing at all what's the matter if we're gonna enforce the fifty dollars or three hundred or a million?
Well what David said though is that it's a step towards that.
So so
Oh
And the other side of the coin is is that if if your I don't know this for a fact but if your building inspector is thinking it's not worth my time to f issue a violation 'cause a fifty dollars is gonna be meaningless um
Right.
take that issue and turn it into now you have the tool um how come you can't do the uh enforcement?
Right.
It's
Has he expressed that concern to you David?
Uh yes he has.
Okay so that's coming from the building commissioner that he doesn't wanna issue violations 'cause he feels like it's
I was I was told a number of things by the building commissioner which I I spent some time researching and found that the issues are small to um small enough that we can deal with them or they don't really exist it's just a matter of perception
Okay.
um and so that's part of my conversation with the building inspector is you're talk you're talking like the cr issue of non-criminal disposition 'cause he was advising me that the town has never adopted non-criminal disposition and therefore that's an impediment to zoning enforcement 'cause otherwise you have to take him to court and that's lawyer's fees and stuff like that and so the juice ain't worth the squeezing um so I I checked it out I did my homework looked up the mass general law having to do with non-criminal disposition it is not a local option law it applies to all three hundred and fifty one communities equally we have it in our zoning bylaws uh s explicitly um so we don't need to worry about that issue that that concern has gone away
Okay.
so let's start focusing on the things that we can make uh a difference and let's find out why Gardner can't uh do the job that we pay the money for and their contract is up this uh this year by the way.
Okay. Thanks David.
Okay um any further matters?
Uh I have three employees for the fire department and chief has would like to get on board.
Okay.
Three what'd you say employees for the fire department?
Three separate?
Yeah.
Wow.
Are they all full-time? Oh is that one that's one? This one only have one page so let's get started. Huh. Alright are we full on the fire department now or do we
Are these call firefighters?
Yeah.
I think we're call.
So we basically ap appointing them? Or hiring them?
Well if if you had a strong chief so he's he's been appointing but I've we've had to notify the select board about this and if you have a concern then we bring the chief in and talk about leadership.
That's the only thing
I mean one o one of these wages is different than the others do you know why?
Um no.
Are they all for the same position or are they potentially different positions?
Doesn't say and then you it's probably it probably has to be at least
Yeah.
Does he have a wage and class chart that he follows?
Okay so let's so it's three applicants for one position?
No it's three positions.
Three appointments.
And we got three applicants for three points but we don't know how many applicants we got.
For three positions. We have three app well well I don't know how many applicants we have we have the uh the chief has said that he would like to hire these three people.
Right. Right.
Gotta just recall.
Well I think we gotta find that out before I guess it is.
So he's already hired him 'cause he can right so we're just waiving the notification period so at our next meeting we can still waive the notification period
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
but it sounds like we have a couple questions do you get those answers for us?
Yeah.
Kinda that reads different.
David are these his forms or our forms?
Our forms yeah.
Can we throw a line on them that says employee position for the next time?
I don't I can't know.
All right thank you.
Okay well I think we except what we did like you find out find the notes okay any additional matters? Okay see none we got uh public and press questions any o any questions out there?
Um not sure if we're in the right forum but one of our neighbors suggested we come here we'd like to talk about the open D P W position is that available to discuss?
Um we can talk about it here we can tell you what the right way to go about it is?
Sure well we so b you bit of a unique circumstance this is Nick Boragad um he worked for the D P W for several weeks and was terminated prior to that termination he was required to obtain a class B license that we paid thousands of dollars for came back to work and was terminated at the moment.
Okay so you have come to the right place anyway continue.
So I don't know how far back in history you want me to go he worked for the D P W for several weeks when an employee was out um sure
Alright let me just stop for one sec could you introduce yourself please?
Sorry I'm so sorry I'm Kristen Adam this is Nick Boragad I'm his advocate we live in Hubbardston we're Hubbardston residents
Nick Boragad Yeah okay.
um so at a very high level he worked he was um
Last fall I was I accepted a position at the highway department uh at which point I was fulfilling a temporary position for another employee who was injured
Okay.
um I was received um and I was a very successful fit w um within within the crew
In the union? In the union?
And I was given a one-year probationary period
Okay.
um probably the longest I've ever heard of and um that injured worker came back so I was laid off
Okay.
uh I was called back and re-offered a new permanent position and um I accepted it and came back and the stipulation was that I had to earn um a commercial driver's license I never had any interest in being a truck driver but I would be a truck driver for this town absolutely.
I'd say So C D L class A or cl plus P or?
B.
Class B yeah so I had done so um and paid out uh thirty six hundred dollars out of my savings um to obtain this uh license which I had to do during the week classes there were no such thing as weekend any bunk I
While working here?
stayed
Well he that was the thing he had to take three weeks of leave because you he can't the class is in Avon Mass
I did um
and it's from one P M to five P M and it's a two-hour drive each way so while the town did want him to work
So
I don't know if you know what it takes to get a class B license
We haven't get 'em all the time we're I so I I'm I'm her construction companies.
Right you know it's it's really difficult right so we felt that if he had to work for they wanted to work from like six to twelve and then try to get to class from one to five and then come home work six to twelve again and we felt that to make him successful in getting that class B license that probably wasn't gonna be possible 'cause it left him no time to study and really almost no time to sleep
N needless to say I made all the sacrifices necessary to get it and pass it the first time
so
uh upon arriving back um to work I was treated completely differently actually I was treated horrible terribly um and it was I think it was less than two weeks or exactly two weeks after I had come back I was terminated and on my exit interview I was not given a single reason as to what I had done wrong what I could have done better um what I could have done to have prevented this um nothing to learn from it no reference to move forward with I have moved on I am a driver for a brewery and um I just I'm so puzzled as to why the position is available on Indeed on Facebook as an urgent hiring and the sign is out by the road number sixty eight and that the they've yet to fill that position and I meet every single qualification I even went and re um updated all of my hydraulics licenses and my crane operating license so I don't just meet I exceed all um qualifications for the position um and I just had nothing but questions and no answers to any of it and so I come to you because I want every resident in this town to know my experience with the highway department.
Right so I got a couple questions first off um um sorry this happened uh second is is um had you filed any grievances with anybody?
I'm not a member of the union so the you can call upon defendants
With I mean even even with the town administrator or anything had you had you done that?
I've uh had discussions um just recently just today um w with Mister Nixon and um
I meant during the process.
and Mister Brown during the process um
Yeah. I'm not trying to I'm just asking.
You mean of him in being employed or after the termination?
No while it was happening while you were feeling as though you weren't treated well I was wondering if you had
Uh I was just acting against my own um I d I didn't believe it.
Okay so and my third thing is sorry to interrupt but you seem like a pretty articulate guy and you don't seem like um you you seem perceptive so nothing happened to um strain a relationship we're gonna talk to our D P W director I promise you I'm just I'm just asking here.
I I would have loved a performance improvement plan or maybe a retraining or a warning or some communication or
Well we think I my personal opinion I think because he couldn't work for those three weeks I think that Travis had a personal issue with it and then when he came back to work um he was asking him questions about the test yeah.
So that's
So so I need to I need to jump in real quick so so fine
Yeah That speculation though right.
Yeah that's my belief.
And I also have to jump in because we can't speak about someone who's not here okay so there are there are certain um things that we can do
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
about that 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 talk about executive session which is a closed session of the select board which you know we can talk about moving into eventually but um we can't specifically speak about someone you know without their notification that we might be talking about him so I just wanna sort of say that is that what you were gonna say as well?
I'm sure I'll say that yeah.
Same same thing there so
Yeah yeah.
Yeah sure and the only reason we kinda brought it up is because on your Facebook page today it said urgent 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 hiring 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 and we need somebody you know who's on your Facebook page so he reached out to Dave and to Travis only to tell today was told today the job's on hold but yet it's posted on Indeed it's posted on your Facebook page and
So so if it's on hold why why is it on Indeed?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um why is it an urgent hiring and why is the pay rate higher than what I was offered?
And I think we're just looking for some he's here in Hubbardston he's available to work Monday through Friday the hours that you're asking is there something we can do to have a session where we hash this out and see if there is a possibility that he could he could work for the town and be employed I mean we're in the process of looking at houses and we took that money that we had for a down payment sorry to get him this license 'cause we thought he was gonna work for the town.
I think my biggest problem is that I I po kinda bankrupted myself getting this license because I knew it was important for the job and I knew that it was value-added and I knew that it was gonna pay for itself or I thought it was gonna pay for itself and that it was gonna be worth it being local here.
And you'd been told specifically that you had to get that?
Yes it is in writing in my offer letter.
Had to get it as a condition a condition of employment.
That doesn't sound right to me at all that's sorry about that.
Well the the story has two sides to every story.
Yeah I'm sure but
So and I g I agree there were times when he came home and there was some constructives criticism but there was no training there's no formal training program there's no on-site it's go do this go find this no map no training no help
I
and I get it uh there's a lot of people who don't wanna train people but if you tell someone to do something once and they don't do it right is that grounds for termination I don't know you know
Oh go clean the culverts okay cool how many are on the street oh just go find 'em you'll find 'em and then reactively it's like oh you missed four culverts and I'm like well I've been having trouble finding them they don't exist under they might be under a pile we don't know it just you know it's it's it was kinda reactive and there should be more instruction training or maps or or some sort of plan where we all succeed and and we do our jobs efficiently and um
I think the biggest thing is he felt there was a big difference when the first time when he was filling in and the second time when he came back from training you know the first time
Mm.
everybody was part of a team and everybody spoke to each other and talked to each other and then when he came back there was a huge difference of no one speaking to him um
I I I was I was given a vehicle that doesn't pass a G O T inspection um uh I mean
Alright well
Yeah I mean he literally just came back from training and they're telling him don't drive a truck if it doesn't pass this inspection
Yeah.
and unfortunately it's probably what we have to live with when we live in Hubbardston right is that we probably have vehicles that aren't gonna you know based on hearing our budget and things like that we probably have vehicles that aren't the safest to drive okay but then
Not where brand-new vehicles not being used
Oh I didn't know that.
or the new the new employee has had the new vehicle.
Well and and not to stifle but again we are sort of fringing upon um what we should be talking about in in probably another environment but we get the gist
Mm-hmm. Okay.
so I think you've clearly um let us know um uh exactly uh sort of where where you stand um and we have to deal with that and we will so the next piece of this is for us to to contact our D P W director um and we'll uh if your your information um if David could have that it sounds like he probably already does
It's on the sign in sheet?
Okay.
Our our uh just our phone number I don't know if you want an email mm-hmm.
So we're gonna we're gonna put it on future um agenda whether or not that's in open session which we're in now or whether we're gonna go straight into executive session you'll be notified regardless and you'll have your chance to sort of um comment on that but um you know this is all new to us?
Mm-hmm. Sure does anyone actually know if the position's still open?
I that they literally don't even know that.
Well can I can I ask what what your resolution what you'd preferable res resolution would be? Would you like to work for the town of Hus Hubbardston would you like
Well I don't wanna enter into a disparate work arrangement of any sort
Understood understood.
but I I put in um thirty six hundred dollars for the license and fourteen hundred in hotel stay to obtain the license as quickly as possible so that I met all qualifications for the job which was a requirement in the written agreement.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think yes the answer is yes we would love we love this town I my my mom and I bought
I do love this town.
the Powell's old property I don't know if you can remember Gil and Judy Powell you guys are all maybe a little young but they owned a farm a cattle farm up on Williamsville Road that we bought back in gosh ninety-something
Ninety-seven. Ninety-seven I was living in Buck Street yeah.
so I've had family here um for a long long time and we just actually moved back to the area about a year and a half ago and we we rent from Tom we rent a house right now on High Street and I love this town I have horses and everything so I fit right into this town and we've been trying to buy a house in this town.
So yeah I I lost the ability to to take a loan now for uh I had a I had another agenda and it's kinda forgotten by the wayside.
But you are you are gainfully employed today as a C D L driver?
I am yeah yeah.
You from the Bartlett?
Hmm?
I did I played football for Bartlett and you went to Shepherd Hill and so you played uh did you play soccer?
Jason.
Do you play soccer with Tim Cormier?
Yeah.
Tim Cormier's my first cousin.
Oh okay.
Yeah fine. I know Bureau Guard Bartlett I live in
I know your face and I knew it I knew it I said Dan
Is it is it another You're not the only Bureau Guard either.
This happens uh he knows somewhere e someone everywhere we go
Yeah yeah that's funny.
So yeah.
He still teaches he's he's at over over at uh Shepherd Hill right?
Alright. Well I don't know. I think
He is.
So yeah I think the best case scenario is what we're thinking is if we could if you're interested in hiring Nick after having your meeting let's let's work out something where it works for both parties where it could work for the supervisor and it could work for him so nobody feels that it's I don't know you know what I mean that there's no hard feelings there and whether it be some kind of more documented plan of his employment with expectation and goals set out like every other job has I think you mentioned today you guys have even have goals aren't you vol are you volunteer or are you paid so there was nothing like that that happened so maybe if something could be more structured that might be helpful I I work too I work full-time and I work for a health plan and I have goals that I have to meet and it helps me you know do what I have to do and learn what I have to learn.
So even if I don't get a job back here as long as this is a learning opportunity for everyone um um so that that things like this don't go by the wayside because now you have to hi- hire somebody as an emergency driver at forty an hour to plow. Uh that wouldn't be fiscal sense to our strict budgets.
Okay, alright, understood, so we'll um, you know, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks guys.
Sure.
Alright, well let's see, another question came in, be a public press.
Move for adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, not debatable, it is eight o'clock, um all in favor?
Right.
Right, yes.
Yes, alright.
Yeah.